Kristy.
Thank you very much, Council President Valerie O'Halloran and council members who are with us in person and virtually. I'm Kristy Rowland, your Deputy CIO and the Administrator of the Executive Services Department, who is just shy of two years old. So we're very excited. I'm very proud that you've already heard from two fifths of us so far this year. You're going to hear from another two fifths of us tonight. So two more divisions from our department. And by the end of the year, you'll also hear from the Communications Division once our director has just a little more time to get her feet under her. So with that, I'm very, very proud to introduce Young Yun, our IT Director, who will be walking you through what they've been up to, where they're heading, and a little bit about our strategic plan. And he has one of his managers with him, Brett Teigen, one of our three managers in IT presenting tonight. So thank you very much. I'll pass it over.
Evening, Council President O'Halloran and council members. My name is Young Yun. I am the IT Director. We'll be going over the update on IT and the strategic plan. Our team consists of, our IT team consists of five teams. The Network Infrastructure and Systems and Security, the Application Support Team, GIS Data and Mapping, Client Services, formerly known as Service Desk, and Administrative Support. Our mission statement, this is the only slide I'll read, is create a technology environment that upholds our commitments to the community and empowers city staff to provide exceptional public service. We'd like to share some of the recently completed IT projects. I'll pass it on to Brett.
Good evening, council members. Appreciate you guys having us. Thank you for the opportunity. First project I'd like to bring up is the expanded Wi-Fi, public Wi-Fi at our recreation centers. We had upgraded this service in the Renton Community Center, the Don Person's Renton Senior Activity Center, and four other locations as shown on the screen there. This effort was a partnership with Parks and Recreation in order to determine which areas they felt would be the most beneficial for increased wireless coverage. The completion of this project provided expanded and improved Wi-Fi coverage at city facilities for both staff and the public. Another project we worked on was the Axon, the first implementation of body cameras using Axon system. We also upgraded the car video systems with this. By aligning these technologies, we streamline the processes for the police to manage their digital records. IT also participated in IEMC training. By being part of this training, it was benefited by helping us understand the technologies we need to have in place in the case of an emergency. With your support through the budgeting process, IT has also had the opportunity to have an expanded focus on providing formal training to both IT staff as well as employees of citywide. Over the past few years, IT has worked to be proactive in including training for IT and city staff as part of new projects, which is also one of our foundational aspects of the strategic plan. As you may have noticed, we are also making improvements to our Lobby Hub and continue to evaluate and update the systems as we learn from data collected and feedback from staff and customers. Going forward, we will also continue partnering with the cross-departmental group, departmental group, heading up the first floor lobby remodel. At this point, I'd like to pause for a moment if you have any questions on what I've gone over so far.
It's probably a silly question, but how long has the self-service kiosk been there? First part, and then secondly, is it used a lot? I mean, is it serving really the purpose that it was kind of meant to serve?
I can answer that one, having been part of the group that installed that. It's been there over a year now. The self-service kiosk itself went in in the winter of last year. And it's really just a wayfinder at this point. We have a Google phone and screen where our lobby attendant can actually help people access city services online. And she does do provide that service, kind of a concierge service. But there's still not completely self-sufficient self-service kiosk like I think you're asking about. But we will get there.
I believe you.
Any other questions? Okay. Next, I'd like to go over some of the current IT CIP initiatives that are in progress. In 2022, IT submitted our first full CIP budget request. One of those projects that came from that is the phone system upgrade. We're currently running the new and old systems in tandem as we work over the next few months to fully transition over to the new system. One of the key improvements of the upgraded phone system is for staff to make, is staff to have the ability to make and receive phone calls to nearly any city-issued device. Another initiative that we're working on is an upgrade to SharePoint Online from our old SharePoint system. We recently completed the initial framework of the new system and will be working to migrate additional information over the next several months. The new centralized format that has been initiated has been very helpful in helping staff and access information quickly. We've also partnered with the Communications Department to evaluate and replace the current city website in order to modernize the tools and features we can offer the community. Through establishing the CIP as part of the IT budgetary process, we've been able to make security infrastructure, pardon me, infrastructure investments a top priority with dedicated resources for the updates. We've also been able to, as part of the CIP submitted in 2022, request funding to implement infrastructure to support a more robust disaster recovery and business continuity plan. With council support, we have now completed Phase One of this plan and will be making additional improvements in 2024.
Thank you, Brett. For the ERP replacement, IT has partnered with Finance for this project. The current system is over 20 years old and is due to sunset in 2027. The RFP has just posted as of last week, Friday. IT will work with Finance to envision what can be possible with a new system. IT has been implementing tools to allow the city to make data-driven decisions. One example dashboard here is the Lobby Hub data that we have been collecting and using as our pilot to test our data integrity. As part of the IT Strategic Plan Assessment, the consultant reviewed all aspects of IT, of the IT division. The consultant also interviewed IT and city staff at all levels and groups as part of this assessment. They also conducted an anonymous staff survey. We also plan to share this strategic plan with the Equity Commission, seeking any feedback they may have. We also had it during, as part of the strategic plan assessment, there was an IT maturity assessment done, which was a snapshot in time when the project started. And it gave us a great view into where we were at and where we need to improve. The last column is a representation of where we would be headed if no further action was taken. I won't read through all the items listed, but they informed us of key areas that need action. These are the four core areas that were defined by the strategic plan. IT and the consultant held a visioning session, and we agreed on several goals under these core areas. We have listed just a few in the following slides. We're currently in the process of replacing our IT Service Management Platform. This platform includes a customer service portal, customer self-service portal, work order management system, asset management, change and problem management, among other features. We'll be refreshing the function and role of the IT Governance Board, which will help guide us while aligning with the overall city business plan. The Governance Board will also help IT prioritize CIP requests. We continue to evaluate and update the systems as we are learning from the data we collect and the feedback from staff and customers. As we mentioned before, we will be replacing the ERP system as it is top priority. We'll also be expanding our use of Laserfish, our document management system, which is the city's central store of official records and allows for both internal and external document access. Further expansion will create more self-service opportunities and help mitigate the impact of public records requests. IT will continue to enhance our relationship with departments to foster proactive communication and collaboration regarding their operational technology needs to help drive discussions of what is possible. In support of this goal, organizational development and IT have partnered to implement results-based accountability in order to foster measurable outcomes as identified in the city business plan. We would like to thank the Committee of the Whole for letting us showcase initiatives we have been able to undertake due to your continued support. We look forward to continuing to provide you with updates on our progress and accomplishments.
Any questions? I have a question. It's really a 40,000-foot question. Do we have a seesaw on staff?
A what?
A seesaw, a Certified Information Systems Auditor? Do we have anybody in Finance or IT who has that accreditation? All right, thank you. Thank you. Okay, thank you very kindly.
Thank you.
While we shift gears, we have two presentations this evening. The second is another ESD superstar, Deb Needham, who is our Emergency Management Director, who will be giving you an update on all things emergency management and what you can look forward to in the future. Take it away, Deb. I didn't stretch that quite long enough.
I am going to be going through this fairly quickly, but I want to encourage and invite you to ask questions along the way. Please feel free to interrupt me at any time. I have our mission here that's there. I'll read this one, and it's fostering a culture of preparedness and community self-sufficiency, working inclusively with our diverse community to coordinate effective disaster response, preparing our whole community to be uniquely resilient through adversity and recovery. So this is the rest of our team. We are small but mighty. So on the left there in the picture is MJ Jorgensen. She leads up our planning, training, and exercising components. And then we have Michelle Toyer, who most recently joined us. She is our bilingual member, so she is fluent in Spanish, which is a real asset to our division. She is leading up our community outreach efforts, and she's also leading our continuity planning efforts within the city as well. And a couple of other smaller planning items like the Cedar Falls Dam evacuation plan. She'll be leading that up and taking that over. So we have, in emergency management, we have two strategic goals. The first strategic goal we have is to have a prepared and resilient community. And what this means is that we are looking constantly at what are the hazards that we have? How do we mitigate those and make sure that it lessens the impact on the community? This involves also looking at community development strategies in order to minimize disaster vulnerabilities, making sure that everyone can receive emergency information and paying special attention to those with limited English proficiency or with access and functional needs who might have difficulty receiving emergency messages. And in fact, we'll be presenting tomorrow night to the Equity Commission. We will be presenting the Inclusive Emergency Communication Plan, which is part of our Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan update. We also encourage people to take responsibility for their own household and business preparedness because we know that government cannot be everywhere. And so we encourage people to do their own preparedness, and we provide support and information for them on that. We also have community emergency response teams. We just graduated over 20 people in the Community Emergency Response Team Program. There will be another class offered in the fall. We have a huge history of volunteerism with emergency management. Everybody likes disaster involvement because they want to do something. It helps them feel empowered to do something about it. So our Renton Emergency Communication Service is a group of dedicated amateur radio volunteers who provide redundant communications for us. So if everything else is down, we still have radios, and they have battery packs that last forever, I swear. I don't think we could ever interrupt what they're doing short of a really big solar flare. And then we have the Renton Emergency Preparedness Academy. This is where we take things out to the community and we offer them opportunities to learn about how to be better prepared and safer. So there's things that we host, including CPR classes. Even though emergency management doesn't do CPR, we recognize that people need to have that kind of training. And so we offer a forum for that in partnership with Renton Technical College and the RFA. And then one of the projects that Michelle is working on is revitalizing the community organizations active in disaster. These are organizations who already have a mission to serve the community, and we leverage them to bring them in during disasters so that they can help the community by doing what they do best. And so we leverage the nonprofit sector that way. Then our strategic goal number two is to have prepared and responsive city teams. So that picture up there on the upper left, that was our most recent Maple Valley Highway landslide. That's my own photo. This is one of the things we make sure people are able to do is be supported in the field. So that's part of what emergency management does. So I was out there taking them hamburgers and french fries that night because they were working through the night. And then, of course, our police, all of our other Public Works, Parks and Recreation, everybody who does their part, and including the EOC teams when people come together and work in our EOC as well. We do a lot of interdepartmental coordination. So we have our Emergency Management Group, which is made up of representatives from every department. We meet monthly, and in those group meetings, we not only look at plans and review plans, but we also look at where the needs are. So we ask people for ideas on grant-funded projects that could be done, where they see gaps in our emergency response planning, and we solve those together as an emergency management group. And the other thing that we do is we also have the, like the Integrated Emergency Management Course, which several people went back on. Over 60 people that we took to get that kind of training. We also do grant support. We're always keeping an eye out for grant opportunities and forwarding those on. We're also managing the Public Assistance Grant, which ultimately will hopefully bring in close to $12 million for the city in the long run. I don't like to get anyone's hopes up that we're going to see that immediately. The last disaster we had, I forget how many million dollars, four million, something like that. It took 10 years to collect all of it from FEMA and the state, but we are persistent and we do keep tracking it. We also do a lot with tangible support for our other department partners, such as with snow and ice. A couple of years ago, actually 2020, we were in danger of running out of ice handling materials. So we were out of sand, almost, not quite, but almost. And our resources were blocked because they closed the passes. So emergency management was contacted. We were asked to see if we could get a different supplier rather than our usual one. And so we were brokering, getting the supplies that we needed to help keep the roads going. So Public Works did all the work, but on the backend, we were supporting them. The other thing, the other picture that's up there is a picture from Valley Medical Center. One of the things that, a lot of things we do are behind the scenes, but one of the things that was probably not very well-known is that in the middle of COVID, the hospital found out that we might have resources to be able to help them do some planning. They were having to put people, discharge them to home before they felt comfortable discharging them to home, but they just simply didn't have room in the hospital. And they were very concerned and were concerned for patient safety, as they should be. And so they reached out to us to see about what solutions could we offer. And so we convened a couple of meetings and brainstormed some solutions and worked it through with them. They were able to solve the problem. So sometimes serving as a think tank for our neighborhood and community partners is what we do. We've also done some bricks and mortar projects. We grant-funded the airport emergency gate power by using grant, leveraging grant funds. And we've been providing help to the different departments with continuity planning. So Michelle has been reaching out to departments and working on that. So I mentioned that a lot of what we do is behind the scenes. We spend a huge amount of our time working the relationships that we have with regional partners, cultivating and getting to know people. I think, if I am the person that has the most contacts in Outlook, IT can back me up on that. I think we ended up having some problems synchronizing my contacts because there were so many. I have saved every contact I've ever made, and I make notes, and I keep up with them. So when we need to pull strings and we need to pull people in, we have the contacts to reach out to. We also spend our time doing education and outreach because we want to be sure that we're educating people and we're making sure that they're doing their best preparedness as well. And then all of that planning, training, exercising, the grant administration, the things we do as an EOC duty officer, all those things are kind of invisible because what people see is when we have a disaster, that's what they think emergency management does. But it takes 95 or more percent of our time to do all those other things to make those disaster responses go smoothly. So I wanted to just give a little division of roles here, how things work. Like the EOC duty officer, I mentioned that, you know, I took a meal out to the crews working the Maple Valley Highway landslide. We work on low-level coordination things. Last night, there was a commercial fire, and it was in my neighborhood. So I saw the smoke, and I realized it was like either at the Renton Inn or right next to it. So I reached out to the fire duty chief and let them know, hey, we're a resource if you have to relocate people. If they had a full census at the Renton Inn, that's a lot of people that could be displaced. But that's low-level coordination. That's a phone call. I could then make a phone call to Parks and Recreation or Red Cross, and we could find a solution. So at that level, that's what the EOC duty officer does. The Field Incident Commander, they're making all of those tactical decisions in the field. So they're calling the shots. They're making the decisions about what needs to be done. When they need support, if they need support, the Emergency Operations Center is there as a support for Incident Command. And we help coordinate information. We help get them resources they might need. Anything else they want to delegate to us and they ask us to do, we will do it. And then we refer policy issues up, and this is where your group comes in. The Policy Advisory Group and Council are operating at that policy level. The mayor's staff provides policy guidance to the departments, but Council sets those highest-level policy and legislative remedies that might be needed during a disaster. So this is really how, if we were to visualize this in an org chart, we have our elected officials setting the policy overall. We have the executive leadership team that is advising Council on what might be needed at the department level, and then they're passing down policy-level guidance to departments. We have to have central information coordination. So the lead PIO is attached to the executive leadership team, but there is also PIOs that work within the Emergency Operations Center, and they coordinate with that. We've got a dotted line between Field Incident Command and the EOC because the EOC is there in a support role. But Field Incident Command is accountable to the executive leadership team, and so is the EOC. So we have that sort of a sibling relationship, but we're sort of the younger siblings. So we provide support and we do what we're told when it comes to Field Incident Command. So the role of senior and elected officials, there's a really good video. I'm just going to show you a very quick snippet of this video, just as a teaser, just to let you know what's in it. FEMA has put out some really good information and materials, which I've got in your packet as a resource, but I'm just going to go ahead and play this little snippet here for you, just to give a quick overview.
Local elected and appointed officials play many important roles in supporting and leading their communities, from overseeing the day-to-day operations of the local government to setting budgets for critical community services. These senior officials also play a vital role in preparing for, responding to, and recovering from disasters. Over the past decade, a federal emergency has been declared in every state at least once. The need for effective emergency management leadership is everywhere. In many ways, senior officials can make or break the success of disaster operations. Their actions can reduce impacts and enhance positive outcomes for their residents or contribute to inefficiencies and losses that greatly impact their community.
Disaster response and recovery are more effective when senior officials are familiar with emergency management processes and have established relationships with their community's emergency managers. For example, working with the emergency manager to establish mutual aid agreements to fill potential resource gaps can accelerate and enhance response efforts. For this reason, it is critical that senior officials understand their potential role in disaster preparedness and actively engage with emergency management before, during, and after disasters.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and stop it there. There's lots more in there, and I've given some resources that you can look up and print out if you like. But I wanted to call attention to what's coming up in front of Council that's related to emergency management. First of all, we have the $12 million worth of damages that we experienced in the 2020 flood. We can get up to probably 8 million and even a little bit beyond because the state has been kicking in more than they usually do. So somewhere between 8 and 12 million dollars is what we're looking at. A lot of those are currently being processed, permitting. The Corps, the Army Corps, has a few permits that they need to issue us, but they're starting to get rolling on some of those. So you're going to start seeing those project contracts coming before you. We also have the Emergency Management Performance Grant, which underwrites a lot of what emergency management does in other departments. In fact, we were the last couple of years, and in the coming year, we've applied to fund some of the cybersecurity projects for IT. So that will be coming up. We'll have an award letter that we'll be asking you to approve in September-ish, whenever we get that from the state. Then the Continuity Plan Revision that's ongoing is scheduled for completion in January of 2024. And so we'll be wanting to have that adopted in February or March of 2024 officially. And then the Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan is currently under revision. We will be wrapping that up in August with the different department input. It'll go to executive leadership team, and then it will be coming before you in September. We'll be looking for adoption in October of this year. It goes to the state, and we usually get a turnaround and approval by the state in January, which is when our plan will renew. And there was one I forgot to add on to the slide. I don't know why I forgot it. But we also have our annual Ready and Renton Campaign coming up. So we'll be looking at a Disaster Preparedness Month proclamation for September. So we'll be preparing that for the early part of September. And then we have just a little bit about that Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan because that's, it's a chunk. It is a binder that's probably, when it's all put together, it's at least a two- or three-inch binder. It basically describes the roles, responsibilities, and interactions that different departments and agencies have in a disaster, and it's based on those emergency support functions. So there's basically chapters that make it easier to wade through. And each of those chapters or emergency support functions is led by a specific department or agency. And then we coordinate, as emergency management, we coordinate it overall. The most recent five-year revision, that was when we added the Cybersecurity Annex. We added limited English proficiency considerations. We are now doing a freestanding Inclusive Emergency Communication Plan, which is what the state is now wanting to see. So we're complying with that and breaking it out into a separate plan, but we will send it on through along with the CEMP. And so we should have that to you and be ready for approval in October. So if there's any questions along the way, MJ Jorgensen is our lead, but I'm also happy to answer questions about the CEMP. And then the EM projects, we have a lot, so I'm just going to let these scroll. I'm not going to talk to all these. We do a lot in emergency management. I said we are small but mighty. These are the things that are currently in our next two years coming up. So we have a lot going on. There's also a lot of things that we don't do. We just don't have bandwidth to do them all. But what we have done is we have looked at what our mandates are. We've looked at what the community's priorities are, what council priorities are. And what we have done is we've selected those projects that most closely match that and that align with our city's business plan. And then the training and resources that we have for council members, these are clickable links in the PowerPoint, but I'm happy to send those to you in an email as well. I think that FEMA Local Elected and Appointed Officials Guide is really useful. I was very impressed with the work that they did on putting that together. There is also an in-person class that is available. When it is available, I will make sure everybody knows about it. Right now, there is not one offered in the near future, but I'm hoping that will be one that we will have soon. It's a half-day class, in-person delivery, and it provides for really good interaction. So I think that's what I have for you. I would entertain questions if you have any right now.
Thank you, Debbie. I always enjoy your presentations. I remember before the pandemic, we have a couple of presentations like this annually. And you always give us some examples of what can happen and what our role as local elected officials possible could be in case of a disaster. And I always thought, oh my God, I hope that never, nothing like this has happened. I have been in a couple of disasters in my life, and I know how bad it goes. I'm talking big earthquakes, like 1985 in Mexico, which was devastating. And I know what requires for a community to survive this kind of disaster. So in those examples, I always bring my lived experience, and I try to always talk to you about it and say, are we ready for this? Are we ready for that? However, when 2020 hit us and the pandemic came, it was so surprising. It was so new that at the federal, state, local, national, world level, nobody was prepared for anything like that. And we all had to learn how to face this on the go. That year, I was president of the council and was with the mayor in several meetings, trying to see how we were going to survive the unknown. And even though we had a plan, really, we realized we don't have a plan for this in so many levels. At local level, Debbie, how many things changed in our preparedness after the 2020, after the COVID? How many things changed? What did we learn? And we used to have, this is the procedure and this is the way it goes. But in some cases, that procedure, we have to skip it and go to another level and work with what's workable at the time. Did we record that? Did we record that and we made those changes? We say, we thought this was going to work this way, but it doesn't. So this is more effective. This is faster. I remember perfectly being in the first meeting when we decided that we were going to close City Hall, and we were just waiting for King County to reply to us, and we were freeze because King County was not giving us any direction. And as a local level, we need to start making decisions of our own. Have we changed any of the directives? Do we know now better how to face these unknown circumstances?
I would say yes, and all of those things that we captured. We had our EOC was activated, not in the physical sense, because we were all working remotely, but we were meeting, at least we started off meeting every day, and then we were meeting twice a week, and then we were meeting weekly. But we met weekly throughout, all the way through the tail end of the COVID lockdown era. And during that time, there were all of these things that were developed, the lobby. I know that Christie was very instrumental in developing some lobby solutions. And so all of those things, we have recorded all of those. The, the things that didn't work so well, I think they've just gone by the wayside. People haven't not forgotten those, and they won't do those again. But we really mostly, what I saw is a lot of creativity, a lot of very capable ideas and solutions that came out. And I think one of the things that it's easy to fall into the thinking that, oh, we just have to have more detailed plans. I think one of the most important things is to encourage people to have the creative thinking process to be able to step back and analyze a situation and then be able to come up with those creative solutions on the fly. And the key in that is communication, and the key on it is collaboration. And so getting people together and saying, here's what we've got. That's what we were doing in the EOC. We were working as the operations section in the EOC, coming up with and passing on potential ideas and solutions to the executive leadership team. So we had all the departments represented and all of them feeding into those solutions. So I think we have a system that is designed to be able to adapt and to adjust to those things, and we have captured those lessons learned. And there is always still the possibility, they, they refer to those as black swan events. And so you get those occasional things that happen that are just like you didn't anticipate, or they're just so rare. You know, like a massive solar flare, I mentioned that, that could knock out communications entirely. Well, we have backup redundant communications, but they are also vulnerable to that. So what we would need to do is go to good old-fashioned face-to-face and paper communications. So those are the things, we always keep those systems, those backup systems are always in place for us for those reasons. So I, you know, I would like to say we're always prepared for everything. What we have is an emergency plan that is based on emergency support functions, and that is our strength. Because in that, it says, if we, if we lose communications, how do we restore communications? It has a process for restoring that and who's responsible for it. If it's about transportation, we have Public Works that's in charge of our transportation emergency support function. So rather than trying to pin down every possible scenario, we have identified what are the crucial things that have to happen in order for our community to function, in order for emergency response to happen. And then those people who are responsible for that function, they come together, they solve it with the people who are their support agencies, and we solve things on the fly if it's an unusual event. I think with the pandemic, it wasn't, I will say, it wasn't 100% unanticipated because I had done some preliminary work in 2009 when swine flu broke onto the scene and we were told, hey, it's going to be a pandemic. So we had actually gone through all the hoops of thinking about like an employee screening process. I had a flowchart established way back in 2009. So when we needed to look at how are we going to navigate the pandemic, we'd had some thought processes around that before. But we also had a lot of new faces at the table, which is why I think we need to always be constantly training, constantly talking about, and bringing all the voices to the table to, to come up with those solutions. I don't know if that answers your question. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
I have nothing. You're very comprehensive, Debbie.
Okay.
A little scary too, but.
I've told that before. I, I like to say they pay me to be paranoid, so it's okay. I revel in it. Well, thank you very much for your time. If you have any questions, you know how to get ahold of me. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Both presentations were very good.
Madam Chair?
Yes. Oh, yes. Hello.
Yeah, I have my hand raised. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I, I think as we've witnessed navigating the pandemic, I think you guys did tremendous work, and just this update is extremely helpful. I have a question. You mentioned elected official and having the training. You mentioned twice a year. Kind of roughly, when are they?
So the elected official training, I, I don't know right now where the G402 class, when it will be offered. There are, there are trainings that are available online that are 100% always available. So those, the IS 100 and the IS 700 are recommended. And, and then the Public Officials Guide that, that handout, the PDF that FEMA produces, that is like a self-study sort of course, but then the G402 goes through in an in-person one. As soon as I find an offering, I'm actively seeking one out, but I was unable to find one within driving distance anywhere. So it's not even currently offered at FEMA right now, but I will be looking for that.
Great. Thank you.
Right. Sorry, Councilmember Vaughn. I didn't see your hand raised. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you so much.